Call to order at six o'clock pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen-eleven of the Nebraska statutes. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District One in the Board of Educational Service Unit Number Nineteen will be held on Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at six o'clock P. M. in the Teaching and Learning Center at the Teacher Administrative Center, thirty-two fifteen Cummings Street. Please visit our website, www OPS dot org. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to section eighty-four, fourteen-twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Teaching and Learning Center on the North Wall. Please stand and join us for the presentation of colors and pledge of allegiance led by Burke High School's J. R. O. T. C.
Colors, hold.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Over, arch.
Let's move on to roll call, please, Dr. McFarland. One last delivery of your own. Wait, wait, not yet. Thank you, Superintendent Ray. OPS vision and mission, Vice President Snipes.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. The vision, every student, every day, prepared for success, and the mission to prepare all students for success in college, career, and life.
Nicely done, okay? Gave time, gave Dr. McFarland time to get back to her desk. Roll call, please.
Almanza.
Present.
Erdenberger.
Present.
Hall.
Here.
Holman.
Present.
Crackey.
Here.
Magnusson.
Smith.
Snipes.
Here.
Teelin.
Here.
Seven, present.
Thank you very much. We do have a quorum, and the Board Secretary has been advised of the circumstances under which Ms. Magnusson and Mr. Snip will not be able to join us tonight, so I will entertain a motion to excuse their absences.
All moved.
Seconded.
Thank you. Moved by Dr. Holman, seconded, I believe, by Ms. Almanza. Roll call, please.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackey.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Teelin.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Hall.
Aye.
Seven, aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Up next is the school spotlight. Please welcome our team from curriculum and instruction support.
President Eisenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, and Superintendent Ray. My name is Jamie Kogwa. I serve as the Director of our English Learner Programs, Dual Language Refugee and Migrant Education. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce Ms. Hannah Paredes for our Board of Education Spotlight. Ms. Paredes is the Teaching and Learning Consultant for dual language and world languages, and I'm especially proud of the fact that our district leader for our K-12 dual language programming is herself an Omaha Public Schools graduate who attended dual language at Gomez Heritage Elementary, Mars Middle School, and graduated from South High as within our dual language program. Last November, Ms. Paredes was recognized by the Embassy of Spain for her contributions to the Spanish language, specifically highlighting her work within the Omaha Public Schools dual language program. Ms. Paredes is here to share more about the significance of this award, which is especially relevant this school year as we celebrate twenty-five years of dual language programming in the Omaha Public Schools. Ms. Paredes.
Hola, buenas tardes. Me llamo Hannah Julia Paredes Kalnaski y soy la supervisora de nuestro programa de dos idiomas e idiomas mundiales. Hello, my name is Hannah Julia Paredes Kalnaski, and I serve as our dual language and world languages teaching and learning consultant. As Jamie mentioned, last summer, I attended a national convention where it was announced that I was to receive the Invitación de Oro. It was completely unexpected, and I was so honored. And in English, the Invitación de Oro translates as the Golden Invitation Award. It was an award given to me by the Spanish Embassy of Spain Education Office, which honors contributions to the Spanish language, and receiving this award on behalf of the Omaha Public Schools highlighted the significance of our district's work in creating a sustainable K-12 dual language program and recognizes achievement of our international Spanish Academy status in all ten of our dual language schools. Our six dual language elementary schools, Castalar, Crest Ridge, Gomez Heritage, Jackson, Liberty, and Spring Lake, our three middle schools, Beveridge, Norris, and Mars, and South High School, have all achieved this international academy status by showing commitment to teaching in both English and Spanish for a set percentage of students' day. In addition to our last two schools in the ESA network, Jackson and Liberty, this also means that our district has the highest number of ESA schools of any district in North America. Anytime that I meet with Spanish educators, I feel a sense of great pride in our incredibly unique and enriching opportunities in our K-12 dual language program and in our world language offerings. Our students are able to take honors level and even AP classes in Spanish, and many students earned the Nebraska Seal of Bilinguality Award because of these opportunities. This year, we are already anticipating hundreds of students receiving the Seal of Bilinguality. As of last week, we already have over a hundred applications submitted, with yet another round of applications to be submitted in April. As a former dual language student in this district and as the daughter of one of our longest-serving dual language teachers, I am filled with pride to be able to represent our district, my teachers, both those who taught me and those I now have the privilege to serve, and this program which brings us together. A todos mis maestros, colegas, y amigos, gracias por su apoyo y gracias por ser parte. La parte más importante de este gran programa. Gracias.
Thank you very much. Spotlight is always a great opportunity to learn something I didn't know, so thank you very, very much. I'm going to... Does anybody have any questions?
Not a question, but a comment, President Erdenberger. If that's okay, Mr. Ray. You can go first if you want to. Go ahead.
There's some teachers in the room, but Jane doesn't want to acknowledge you, that are from some of the schools that are mentioned here today. If you could stand up and be recognized too. So there's some of the teachers in the... So, thank you. Thank you.
That was a very good idea, Superintendent Ray. Dr. Holman, can you top that?
Thank you. I just want to personally congratulate Hannah again. I am able to work with Hannah through the bilingual leadership program that we have with UNL and OPS, and so she is such a tremendous leader and knowledgeable, all things dual language, and such a great force for our teachers who are in that program, teachers and other administrators who have been in that program and are in that program currently, and just very thankful for everything that she has brought to the program and just continue to hope that she stays with our district and be the force that she has been and will continue to be. So congratulations again.
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Ms. Almanza.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. Felicidades. Soy muy contenta por usted, pero más que nada por toda nuestra comunidad. So congratulations. I'm very happy for you, but for all of us as well. I do have a question, and you might hear of this often, but why do you think it's so important that our students engage in these type of dual language programs, bilingual see?
Speaking from personal experience, I know the value of knowing another language and how it opens up opportunities all over the world. As a student, I knew that it was an important opportunity that I got here to have a dual language education, and it took me all over the world, working in several different countries and learning plenty of other languages as well, but I think it's equally as important to be able to come back and to give that kind of passion and those opportunities back to the students that we serve.
Muchas gracias. Thank you.
Vice President Snipes.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. Congratulations again, and my question is, I guess, in what ways do you see dual language shaping student confidence and success?
I think that within dual language, we have this beautiful opportunity to showcase the value of the languages that students bring into our district and being able to help foster that and make it a really competitive skill, and I think that there's a couple different of pieces with that, but I think it's so important that all of our students know the importance of their language and the place that it has in our community, both locally and globally. So I think dual language is a great opportunity to showcase that.
I just want, I'm going to ask you to repeat something you said because I was doing other things, and I only caught that back half of it. First of all, we've been, we've had this dual language program for twenty-five years. That's pretty, that's pretty good. Okay. And what was the highest number that we have of? What did that relate to?
Highest number of ESA schools. So ESA stands for International Spanish Academies, which is a designation given by the Embassy of Spain Education Office, and our district has ten certified ESA schools, which makes the district with the largest number of ESA schools in North America.
Wow, that's so great. Well, thank you for everything you do to make that all possible. Have we asked our questions? We're going to clap one more time, and then you're going to come around and get personal points. (APPLAUSE).
Good evening, President Erdenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, and Superintendent Ray. The monthly financial reports for September two thousand and twenty-five have been presented for your review. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. I'm advised that the superintendent has nothing more to say than he hasn't already, and board member comments. Do we have any board member comments? Dr. Holman.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. I actually have a comment from our board colleague, Ricky Smith, that he asked for me to address to you all and to the public, and his words are, "I extend my deepest heartfelt thanks to my fellow board members, colleagues, my wonderful community, and my friends. The outpouring of praise, kind thoughts, and incredible generosity you have all shown me over the past two months of my recovery has been a true blessing. Your support has been a pillar of strength for me and my family, and I am eternally grateful. Thank you for everything." Just wanted to share those words. I did speak with him today, and he's certainly on the up and up and on the road to healing and health.
Thank you for sharing, and on the off chance he's watching, hurry back. Godspeed. Ms. Almanza. Mr. Teelin. At this point, Ms. Crackey. Nothing? Okay. Ms. Full.
Thank you. I wanted to take this opportunity to talk a little about food insecurity within OPS and within Omaha. I've been staying updated about what's happening, as have all of us on the school board, about, you know, the government shutdown, what that means for OPS, how that impacts our students, and it impacts us in several different ways, but one of those is food insecurity because the SNAP benefits as of today are going out for November, but it's only going to be partial, and it will be delayed. Like, people don't have their SNAP benefits on their EBT cards right now. So that presents a pretty hard challenge for us at the school district to make sure we're supporting our students in every way that we can so they succeed at school. As our mission and vision states, you know, every student, every day, prepared for success, and a student can't be prepared for success if they're hungry, and there are so many teachers in the room, and I know this resonates with you deeply. We can't always control what goes on outside of the school, but we can do our part as a school district and as a school board to address some of these food insecurity issues because they have very major consequences for our students. Three in four of our students are on the Free and Reduced Lunch Program, and not only are SNAP benefits going to be only partially issued, there's no guarantees that the shutdown is ending anytime soon, so we don't know if they're going to get benefits after that. So this is a very uncertain time for our students and their families. There are also changes that have been made to SNAP as of October twenty-fifth, so there are new populations that are not going to get benefits or they're going to be reduced, such as refugees. Refugee, there are so many refugee students in our school district, which I consider a strength, but now their parents don't qualify for SNAP, which, like I said, presents a really concerning issue for us. So I don't want those students to fall through the cracks. It's not only the refugee students, but also the foster care students who are aging out of the foster care system, so they don't qualify for SNAP anymore, and that's something very near and dear to my heart because if you know me, I tell this story all the time. I was a foster kid, aged out of the foster care system, and I know, you know, there are eighteen-year-olds aged out of the foster care system who still attend OPS, who still go to school, who still need to eat. So like I said, I just don't want those students, those refugee students, those foster care students to fall through the cracks. So with all that said, I will be introducing a board resolution on November seventeenth to address food insecurity within our school district. There's going to be two major items, and that is to wipe out the school lunch debt that we have accumulated this far into the school year, also to pay for school breakfast and lunch through the rest of two thousand and twenty-five. So I have brought this resolution forward with the support of other board members. I appreciate their collaboration with me because I know it's really hard for us as a school district to filter through what is our job and what isn't, but I think this is definitely something that could positively impact our students. It's not going to fix the entire issue of food insecurity in general for our students, but it's one of the many things that I think everybody in our community is doing to step up to this moment and fill the new gaps that exist. So I appreciate the support that has already been shown for this resolution. I look forward to more conversations with other board members about their questions, but I think this is something that could definitely benefit our students, like I said, and something I would appreciate the support of the rest of the board on. Thank you.
Vice President Snipes.
Thank you, President Erdenberger. A couple of things. I appreciate Director Bree for just bringing forward this timely response. I would also add that, you know, I think about my first time being elected to the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education, and at that time, which is kind of telling my business, but at that time, I still lived in poverty myself. I have also received benefits from SNAP in the past myself as well, and I'm also grateful that, you know, through conversations, you know, we know that OPS is still committed to keeping our students and not having any child-denied-amil. I also want to thank our community partners as well and donors who have also stepped up during this time. Any type of support makes a difference with families who are experiencing this. I have a close relative who has eight children, and she's on SNAP. So definitely get it, and I do want our families to know that, you know, we see our families, and we are with our families. I also want to thank community for those who showed up to the town hall I did at Central High School. I will say it again that, you know, my thought process when I thought to do town halls was really about providing a space outside of public comment, a space to be able to dialogue, a space to learn more about what our roles as board members are, and to also have that connection to administration outside of just the tack building in our school board meetings. So thank you, people who showed up to that, and look to continue doing that as well and always adore. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Snipes. Mrs. Crackey.
My thoughts here are on the coming up town hall. It's going to be at, yeah, right. Be sure you people who are at Buffett and surrounding schools there attend. There's nothing that we want more as a board member than we want you to attend and hear from you, hear your thoughts. I'm really hoping that you will come out that evening. I was at the other one, and our participation with our trying so hard to reach all of you wasn't, we only had three people, so I mean, that is not very good. We all came down, and that's all that we saw, so please come. And the other thing was that I received, and I get in the mail, a couple of my schools send me their big thick medicine and the things that they send home to parents. I couldn't help but notice this one. It was so adorable because it went right along with Moonshot. This is at Crest Ridge, and it says Mission Impossible, and Together We Can Reach Our Moonshot. I just thought that was really, really very clever on their part, and I really liked it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Crackey. I just wanted to, unless there's any misinformation or confusion, I just want to clarify in case anybody wonders, our Free and Reduced Lunch Program and free breakfast for students is not coupled with the SNAP program. I am not minimizing the SNAP situation for a second, but all of our free, we have a stu-, let me put it this way, if you qualify for free lunches, or if you're on SNAP, you automatically qualify. Those students will continue to get free lunch and breakfast every day. So I recognize that there are families that may not be getting the full SNAP payment or whatever the timing of getting it paid is, but as far as OPS is concerned, all of our students that qualify for SNAP or, as in the case of the refugee population, who may not qualify for SNAP under federal law, may still qualify for free lunch depending on what their income levels are. So I just, in case there's any confusion out there, there has been no, and we do not anticipate any interruption in the lunch, our Free and Reduced Lunch Program and Breakfast Program. The resolution that Ms. Full was describing refers to students who are not on Free and Reduced, are not on Free, are not getting free lunch. It primarily applies to students who are currently paying for their lunches, have been paying for their lunches. It's, they started the year paying their lunches, and we assumed they would do so for the whole school year. So that is going to be the nature of the resolution conversation you see, but again, I just want to be clear, our students on free lunch are getting free lunch and breakfast. Our Reduced Lunch students are still getting Reduced Lunch, and I just checked with our Treasurer, Reduced Lunch, in case you didn't know, I didn't, is forty cents. So, you know, it's not nothing, but, so our free lunches are free, our Reduced Lunches are forty cents, and those are all going to continue regardless of what madness is going on with our SNAP programs. Thank you very, very much.
So I recognize that there are families that may not be getting the full SNAP payment or whatever the timing of getting it paid is. But as far as OPS is concerned, all of our students that qualify for SNAP or as in the case of the refugee population, who may not qualify for SNAP under federal law, may still qualify for free lunch depending on what their income levels are. So I just, in case there's any confusion out there, there has been no, and we do not anticipate any interruption in the lunch, our free and reduced lunch program and breakfast program. The resolution that Ms. Full was describing refers to students who are not on free and reduced, are not on free, are not getting free lunch. It primarily applies to students who are currently paying for their lunches, have been paying for their lunches. It's, they started the year paying their lunches and we assumed they would do so for the whole school year. So that is going to be the nature of the resolution conversation you see. But again, I just want to be clear, our students on free lunch are getting free lunch and breakfast. Our reduced lunch students are still getting reduced lunch. And I just checked with our treasurer, reduced lunch, in case you didn't know, I didn't, is 40 cents. So, you know, it's not nothing, but, so our free lunches are free, our reduced lunches are 40 cents, and those are all going to continue regardless of what madness is going on with our SNAP programs. Thank you very, very much. Now we're going to move on to public comment. And our first speaker is Ms. Kathy Pohling.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Pohling, K-A-T-H-Y-P-O-E-H-L-I-N-G. My address is 8135 South 50th Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68157. Good evening, President Erdenberger, Vice President Snipes, members of the board, Superintendent Ray, and all of the educators. Our members worked hard over the past year to develop the proposals we brought forward. These were not drafted in a vacuum or pulled from a template. Every single proposal was written by educators, professionals who have lived through the very situations that inspired them to act. These proposals are rooted in real experience, real challenges, and a deep commitment to making our schools safer, more supportive, and more sustainable for everyone. That's why we were especially disheartened to hear a comment from a district representative suggested that being physically hurt is just the nature of our job. Let us be absolutely clear. Violence is not and must never be accepted as a normal part of any profession, especially not one as vital and human centered as education. Our educators are career professionals. They are trained in pedagogy, trauma-informed care, and classroom management. They are mentors, counselors, nurses, and advocates. But they are not and should never be expected to be targets of physical harm. To suggest otherwise is not only disrespectful, it is dangerous. It sends a message that the safety of our staff is negotiable. It tells our students that violence is tolerated and it undermines the very foundation of a safe and effective learning environment. We understand that our students face complex challenges. Many are navigating trauma, instability, emotional distress, and food insecurity. Our educators are committed to supporting them with compassion and care. But compassion must be paired with systems, systems that protect staff and students alike, that provide timely interventions, and that ensure accountability. We are not asking for perfection. We are asking for partnership and progress. Language brought forward focuses on being proactive and not reactive. Language that prioritizes safety, that prioritizes training that equips staff to deescalate without harm, and for leadership that acknowledges the real challenges we face without minimizing them. To the board, we say this. We are ready to work with you, but we need you to stand with us, not just in words, but in action. Because no one should have to choose between their passion for teaching and their personal safety. I invite you to talk to any of the educators in the room that came tonight before you go into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pohling.
Good evening. My name is Anna Peters, A-N-N-A-P-E-T-E-R-S. My address is 4223 North 93rd Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68134. I hadn't planned on mentioning this, but my child, Jay, was a dual language student from Spring Lake, Mars, and graduated from South last spring, which is the biggest reason I'm actually here. I promised Jay I wouldn't speak to the board as long as they were a student because it was too embarrassing. So as a teacher, parent, and a resident of Omaha Public Schools, I have built up a lot of stuff to say. So you're probably going to see a lot of me because I believe I have like a two minute limit or something. Tonight, I just really want to talk about, oh, five? I'm only going to talk about two things, one of which is actually one of the OEA topics that they sent us in our email, which kind of startled me because it hadn't even occurred to me that you wouldn't be able to take bereavement in separate pieces. Long, long ago, when I was a first year teacher, I midway through the year became also the primary caregiver of my grandma. I moved in with her and was taking care of her after she had a stroke. And one morning I woke up and grandma had died overnight, which we knew was coming. And so I thought I'd be fine and I went to school. And of course, I wasn't fine. And within 30 minutes of arriving at school, I was back down in the office bawling on the secretary's shoulder, who of course wisely sent this brand new teacher back home. So on Tuesday, I went back home and cried with my family. That was my timer. And then I was back at school on Wednesday and Thursday, and then Friday was back home for the funeral. Because quite gratefully, while I might have been the primary caregiver, I didn't have to plan the funeral. That was my mom's job. So it made sense to me to make my bereavement be in the two pieces. The day that I was grieving because grandma had died, and then the day of the funeral. And of course, not between. I was capable of teaching those days. I had it pretty much all together as much as any brand new teacher ever has anything altogether. So I just wanted to speak for, it just makes sense to me that you should be able to do that if that is the circumstances in which you are in. The other thing I want to talk about is actually the middle school grading system. Completely different topic here. But my students went home with a grade card that said A, B, C, D, or F. I teach them and grade them in the standardized grading system that says advanced, proficient, basic, below basic, and failing. And there is a serious disconnect between the two within our parents and culturally neighborhoods' understanding of those. I have a kid who will go home with a C in math, and parents will believe that means they're fine. They understand what's going on more or less well enough. But a C actually corresponds to a basic understanding, which means they get maybe half of what I'm talking about on a good day. And on a bad day, maybe 30%, which is definitely not the C when I was in school, not what a C was when my students' parents were in school. And so they don't understand how come their kid can have Cs and fail the state tests. Well, their kid can have Cs and fail the state test because a C is not proficient. A C doesn't mean they understand. So I really think at the middle school level, when we don't need GPAs yet, our grade cards should say advanced, proficient, basic, below basic, and failing. And we shouldn't be using a dated ABC system-
Thirty seconds.
-that our culture misunderstands and that doesn't match. We need to match what our parents hear to what our students hear.
Thank you very much. We look forward to your future comments. Our next speaker will be Michelle Rogers.
Hello. My name is Michelle Rogers, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E-R-O-D-G-E-R-S, 15565 Adams Street, number 303, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137. So thank you very much for having me up here again. And so as usual, I am going to be speaking about a book that is in, within your guys' libraries. And whenever, and honestly, whenever I first read this book or whenever I first read these things, I felt nauseous. Because once again, not only is the book flamer still in your schools, which is terrible, this book is rated a four out of five. So with this list that I have very easy access to, I wanted to know exactly what does a four out of five mean for the content in this book? And what this means is, so a four out of five, it means no minors should be allowed to read this. This includes, it is only content that is meant for anybody that is eight, that is over the age of 18. So this content also includes sexual items, organs in the state of whenever they're being aroused, obscene references, sexual activities, anal, oral intercourse, and stuff like that. So the book that I'm going to read on is actually called Living Dead Girl. So, so the comment or the, or the title's already kind of bad, Living Dead Girl. So this book contains explicit violence, including child abuse, sexual activities, including sexual assaults, and sexual nudity. So this is actually a book about a father and a daughter. They live in an apartment, but the father is very abusive and he will sell his daughter to his friends. And then they will actually rape her. So this book goes into graphic detail about this girl being raped, not only by her father, but also by her father's friends. They actually hold her down in this book and it goes into graphic detail. So I'm going to actually, I'm going to start actually kind of going over that. So the first one is, "I know silly girl. My girl," he says. And he stands up, he unbuckles his belt, opens his pants. "You come over here and give me a kiss." I get up and I walk over to him. He frowns and I hunch over, so I barely come up to his shoulder. "Alice, my baby," he says, kissing my cheek. Then he shoves me to my knees. When he's finished, he throws the rest of my yogurt. He drinks beer and orders a pizza and puts me on his lap. He likes how smooth I am, how raw my, how raw my skin is. It burns by the time he's done touching it, but there's no breakfast because you now weigh over 100 pounds. That's not acceptable. At bedtime, he rumples his sheets. We have a two bedroom apartment because we are father and daughter, and he wants to take care of me, but he wants me to have my own room, just like the other little girls. And he crawls into my bed with me at nighttime, but I'm so hungry that my head hurts. And so he will not let her eat. The day I got too tall to wear the white dress with the short puffy sleeves and the little tux along the chest, he filled the kitchen sink with water and shoved my head into it. I was 13 and when I tried to stay down after he held me there, my lungs started burning inside of my head and my head was going dark. And then he punched me, and then he kicked me, and then he raped me. I had dried blood in between my legs. And whenever I got my period at 13, I was bleeding so bad that, that the, that the bleeding went onto, onto the carpet. And then he punched me and then I, I was punched out and I was knocked out. So once again, you know, I'm just kind of, I would love for you guys just to see this book for yourself because what I read, probably you're probably thinking it's not a big deal. But anybody that has went through trauma, anybody that has been sexually assaulted, this can be a huge trigger for people as well. So this is just something that you guys might want to start looking into because once again, this content is in your libraries. There have been many other books that we have been talking about and nothing has been done. They are, they, they have a lot of pictures, a lot of porn in it. So if you guys are allowing this, you might want to ask, like, ask yourself why you're allowing this. So I could say a lot more, but I'm out of time, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Our next speaker will be Michaela Kazor.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Kazor, M-I-C-H-A-E-L-A-K-A-Z-O-R. And my address is 1010 North 192nd Court in Elkhorn. Good evening, Superintendent Ray, members of the board and the OPS community. For four and a half years, I have stood at this very meeting since I was 16 years old, begging you to stop sexualizing the children in this district. During my experience, I've had board members turn their chairs on me and mock me with hand gestures. And during the last meeting, a member of this board mocked me when reading a picture book aloud, since I speak about pornographic books that you allow in your libraries. The board member used my exact phrases when introducing the book and looked at me multiple times throughout, thinking that you could shame me into becoming silent. But let this be clear, I will not be silent. I'm not here tonight for me. I am here to defend the thousands of children that you serve in this district. I will read the book because the book I'm reading, it defends itself. It's evil and it's disgusting. It should not be allowed in this school district. This book is called This Book Is Gay, and it's located in the library at Bryan High School. This book is available to minors in the school district. Parents, if you have children in the room, I advise that you move them due to, due to the obscene language in this book. These are direct quotes found on page 179 of the book. During the sex, two women can pleasure each other in a variety of fun ways. Number one, fingers, far more effective than a penis in many ways. A hand can do the job of five penises. When gay women refer to having sex, this is usually what they mean. Lesbians can stimulate the cloritis in vagina and bring their partner to the orgasm with their fingers. Sometimes both partners can do this simultaneously. Number two, oral. This cloritis really does like being licked and kissed. Again, girls can take, take it in turns to perform the oral sex, or if feeling adventurous, they can perform it at the same time. Number three, toys and strap-ons. Some women like these, some don't. Much has been written about why gay women would seek to play with their replacement penis, but I say, who the heck cares? If it feels nice, go for it. Moreover, a man is more than a penis. Just because a woman wants to do something with a bit penis shaped, doesn't mean she fancies broad-shouldered, beardy, no-boobed men. Toys, dildos, vibrators, and strap-ons all fulfill the same purpose. Number three, something in your arse. With John shortly before a cloritis orgasm can feel amazing for some people. Number four, lube is great. Don't worry about the sheets. You can wash them. Never run out of lube, especially if you're doing anything with your arse. Whoever said that lesbians can't have sex, we beg to differ. These are just one page out of the book. The book is practically all of this. This is not education, this is pornography, and it's in your library. And now I want to share some science behind why this is hurting the children in this district. According to National Academy of Sciences in an article from 2020, the impulse control center of the brain doesn't finish until the age of 25. So 14 year olds can check out this book and they still have 11 years left before their brains are fully developed. And it will result in brain injury. The Journal of Adolescence in 2012 says that explicit sex exposure leads to 20 to 30% earlier intercourse and 40% more STIs. Books found in OPS libraries is state endorsed porn. It's not optional like TikTok is.
One minute.
The American Psychological Association in an article from 2023 states that illustrated sex manuals, which its book is practically teaching kids how to have sex, can cause body dysphoria and depression, and 80% in middle school girls. But 14 year olds are just out of middle school, so it applies to high school students as well. Your own counselors would call this harmful. This is not inclusivity. This is medically documented child abuse and it's paid by Omaha taxpayers. Board, I urge you to vote tonight and pull every copy of this book out of your district.
Thirty seconds.
This is filth that's in your library. The science is undeniable and children are watching and God is watching. Please do what is right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kazor. And our final speaker will be Ms. Mary Lincoln. And our final speaker will be Ms. Mary Lincoln.
My name is Mary Lincoln, M.A.R.Y.L.I.N.C.O.L.N. I live at 1812 North 58th Street in Omaha, 68104. Good evening, everyone. In response to recent comments around book bans in school libraries, it's important to remember that intellectual freedom is a cornerstone of education. Books offer a unique opportunity for students and parents to engage in meaningful and thoughtful conversations. Unlike fleeting social media content, books provide depth and context, allowing families to explore complex themes together. It is also crucial to clarify that while certain entities in different states may choose to restrict specific books, this does not mean that the books themselves are inherently harmful or should be universally banned. Each community has its own standards, but it's vital to preserve the opportunity for open dialogue and critical thinking. By encouraging parents and children to read together, we can foster understanding and empathy, helping young readers navigate complex ideas in a safe and supportive environment. In essence, promoting access to diverse books and fostering open conversations helps build a more informed and empathic society. I applaud the Omaha Public Schools and the librarians who curate the variety of materials for the vast interest in our community. Thank you for protecting intellectual freedom and our democracy. Free people, read freely.
Thank you, Ms. Lincoln. And that was our last public comment. And we will now move on to the consent agenda. At this time, any board member may request that any item on the consent agenda be removed from the consent agenda and be considered and voted on separately. At this time, are there any items board members would like to pull from consent?
President Erdenberger, oh, sorry.
Seeing none, are there any abstentions, Vice President Snipes? Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's what I heard. President Erdenberger, please, I need to be excused from approval of claims report C.
President Erdenberger, I also need to be abstaining from item I-8, Claim C, due to my role on the Omaha Schools Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. They are both abstaining from that item. Otherwise, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Holman, seconded by Mr. Tealyn. Roll call, please.
Crackie.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Bow.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Seven Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. We do not have any information, any information items or other action items. And there is one receipt of report on the agenda this evening, which is the Head Start Monthly Report for September 2025. Moving on to closed session, Ms. Snipes.
I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interests and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, chief of staff, Shane Ryan, Colette Nero, and legal counsel, negotiations, personnel matters, and legal advice.
Thank you, Vice President Snipes. I do have a motion to go into closed session. Do I have a second?
Second.
We'll get this one to Ms. Almanza. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Snipes.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Almanza.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Bow.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Crackie. Seven Aye.
Thank you very much. Motion passes. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interests and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals and to discuss with the superintendent, secretary to the board, chief of staff, Shane Ryan, Colette Nero, and legal counsel, negotiations, personnel matters, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 6:52 PM.
Let the record, let the record reflect that the board came out of closed session at 8:41 and that the board meeting adjourned at 8:42. Thank you.